Okay, at this time, we'll move to the public participation portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board? If so, please raise your hand. Okay? And if you could please come forward.
Please sign in, all right.
And sign in before you...
I did already.
Oh, you did already? Okay. Okay. Before addressing the board, I'd just like to remind you of our process. Per Board Policy 2230, we ask that when addressing the board, please identify yourself and be brief. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. The speaker is asked to please conduct oneself with respect and civility towards others. Individuals less than 18 years of age are permitted to address the board of the company by his or her parent or guardian. The board typically does not engage in two-way conversations during the public portion of the meeting. Any follow-up response will be addressed by the administration at a later date. To be respectful of others and to protect confidentiality, complaints against individual students, staff members, and board members either named or unnamed shall not be orally presented to the Board of Education. Such complaints shall be put in writing, signed by the person or persons making the charges, and delivered to the Board of Education's secretary. So, please proceed.
Don't ask me to repeat that.
It'll be a test later.
All right. My name's Tom A. I'm from Dunlap Lacrosse Program. And I'm also here representing a number of our families that are not here tonight. A lot of our kids play and summer travel lacrosse. And we had a tournament Monday, Tuesday, Thursday in Chicago. Some of the kids have a four o'clock game. And I just got back 45 minutes ago. So, I've got a can on my ears. Anyway, in advance of the board's discussion this evening on lacrosse, I want to thank the district administration for meeting and working with our lacrosse community to discuss options for supporting lacrosse as an IHSA sport in 2018. I believe those discussions have resulted in a reasonable recommendation that's contained in the information that Mr. Adrian and Mrs. Casale are going to present to the board tonight. And I specifically want to thank them for reaching out to me after the April meeting. And we had a couple of good meetings and went through, you know, had some really good frank, little discussion. And I'm very happy with working together on that. My request would be for the board to approve the joint parent district partnership in July and not table the decision to a later date. The reason for this is that we've discussed the financial partnership amongst, that's in the proposal, amongst our high school and youth parent community. And our families understand this is the likely path forward. While everybody, including myself, would like there to be no personal incremental cost to participate in lacrosse in our Dunlap High School, we understand that current financial challenges the district has may prevent this. Knowing this, after the April board meeting, our Dunlap lacrosse group got together and embarked on a fundraising campaign to support some of the startup costs that we're looking forward, recognize we're probably going to have. And since our April board meeting, we've raised $4,200 to support those startup costs. Much of this startup cost, much of that money raised was from our youth lacrosse families who want IHSA participation established now in preparation for their children coming to high school in future years. Secondly, there's also a need, in my opinion, to move forward with active planning for next season. Because this is the first year of IHSA lacrosse, our dialogue needs to focus on what and how, not if and when. For example, some of the issues that I think we really need to work soon to address are establishing conference affiliation, because the middle I-N-I, we all know, is not going to have enough programs for any sort of standalone conference. We'll also need to identify and plan on which schools we may co-op with locally, and all that stuff takes time. I'm personally concerned if we wait until fall, other sports priorities will interfere with making a decision on lacrosse. This will ultimately get ourselves behind the law on timing, and we'll lose out on the opportunity for next season. But, and then, as I stated before the April meeting and several times, I really do want to thank the Dunlap or the Dunlap School District for how well they've supported lacrosse over the years. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there anyone else, other than the people that are here for the athletic team presentation, because that's on the agenda? So, anybody else who'd like to address the board? Okay. That will conclude the public participation portion of the meeting. And at this time, the athletic leadership team will present information to the board on accomplishments for the year. And then, this will be followed by a discussion regarding lacrosse as the next IHSA sport. So, if the people presenting for the leadership team would like to come forward and take your Thank you so much for being here today.
No, I don't think I'm sitting down. I just wanted to introduce everybody.
Okay.
So, the members of the leadership team that have met over 40 times this school year, obviously, I was not involved in all of those, but have taken over since. So, Chris Friedman, Mr. Mike Wisdom, Rob Jokish, Chad Klein, Mr. Adrian has been very helpful, and then Brett Casale, who was not able to be here tonight. So, these guys have spent a lot of time and have passion for Dunlap Athletics, and their time is very well appreciated. So, they have some information if they'd like to present.
This is a small subcommittee of the actual full committee. So, they meet probably three times as often as the full committee does. So, a lot of sub-meeting. Brian, you've been in most of the sub-meets too, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, our Gus McCall team for the summer.
Well, you got the tall guy, so.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to sit in front of you guys and have some discussion, at least on our side, for tonight. But, I wanted to kind of bring everybody up to speed. I know that, I know a number of you that are sitting there, and I know that you guys know a little bit about this committee, if not quite a bit of information. Some of us served together on the infancy stages of this committee. But, our journey began a little over a year ago on this particular committee. And I'll be very honest and open and candid, because I think that transparency is probably one of the best things to share with everybody. No one sitting here, the three of us, have any sort of agenda whatsoever. And when we were asked to participate in this committee, we made that very clear. The only agenda that we have is passion for winning and the pursuit of excellence within our high school. And I think that is why we have met over 40 times. I think that's why we continue to meet. I have three children in the district, one that's already gone through the district. I've got two that have played football. I've got a little girl that's a freshman. She's going to be a sophomore, and she plays volleyball. And I can remember the best experiences in my high school career. I grew up here in Peoria and went to Peoria High School, which has a tradition like none other. And we didn't lose very often. I think that that is just as important as our education and experiences that we take with us as we grow up and move on to adulthood. That's part of the reason that we're involved in this committee. We think there's opportunities to improve a lot of different things within the district, so we have ideas. And that's the reason that we're here today.
Just to tell you a little about how we've worked, we, there's really been kind of three different metamorphosis of this committee. I'm going to call it the flying at 50,000 feet part, which Dawn and Brian know what that means. But basically, it was 25 people brought together. And not just 25 people, but basically, all state, different stakeholders in this school district, from parents to athletes, to coaches, to school administrators, to school board members. And the one thing that was most interesting about it is, I don't know how others felt, but myself, I went in with skepticism, to say the least. And Eileen Setti, who was the mediator of those sessions, put those things aside and understood that coming in, what we were dealing with. And basically, taught us to work together, discussing, debating. And what we found by the end of those three sessions was, we really weren't that different as far as our mindset. We may have different ideas about how to get there, but really, we were very close as far as what we wanted. And as a result, we came up with, which hopefully, all of you have seen this, our strategic plan, 40-page document that helped build the foundations of what we want Dunlap Athletics to look like as a whole, not just one person, not just, you know, one section of what we are, but as a group involving all the stakeholders. But, a plan is only as good as the paper it's written. So, the next part was to get down, you know, coming down to earth, so to speak. A smaller committee was created of those same stakeholders to basically start fact-finding, researching, learning what some of the issues were, some of the issues we'd already learned, and start figuring out ways to create action plans for them. The first thing we came up with was kind of, you know, this is good to fall asleep to sometimes, but really, kind of putting into something that you've obviously recognized in the athletic plan on a page, which is basically our foundations and principles, mission statement of, again, what we want to be. And really kind of starting to funnel down the information we want to have. So, then, the final metamorphosis is down to what you see, the five or six people here that have kind of continued. And we still have the planning committee, don't get me wrong, those 10 or 12 people. We use it sounding board for ideas or things that we come up with or discuss. But, we are the ones that have kind of gone that next step with things that have been brought to us either by the athletic director, or the school board members, or whatever the need comes when it involves athletics. And that's really what we're about in here, is to, whatever way we can help athletics. And some of the things you can point to, athletic handbook, I believe you're going to be voting on that this month? If I'm not...
Next month.
Next month? Okay?
It's an information notebook.
Okay, information notebook. Thank you. The head coaches document, which is actually part of those handbooks, and we found that to be very important and helping to develop consistency within our programs from not only high school, but also in the middle school levels. We were involved in the athletic director hiring process. And then, we submitted, we were asked to discuss debate on lacrosse. And so, we've done that. Where we are currently, we're still fact-finding. Funny thing about this committee, I will say, is we learn as we go. It seems like the more we meet, you know, sometimes you can get bogged down in meetings and you get frustrating. But, at the same time, it seems like the more we meet, the more we learn of things that we can do to help. We've developed a list of impediments that hold, we feel, hold back Dunlap Athletics that we hope to tackle in the near future. There's things that we want to do, but we've learned that through meeting with different people. We've met with coaches as a group. We meet regularly with school administrator Scott, and Katie have been big in that. We want to meet with you, the school board members. You guys have your own perceptions, your own ideas. We want to hear them. And tonight, hopefully, that's the start of that conversation. In closing apart, what I would say is, we've seen highs and lows in our athletics the last two years, I think it's fair to say. From last year, where this committee was created, out of concern with the direction of Dunlap Athletics, to this year, on the field having, showing great results. Now, are we responsible for that? No. Are we hopefully having a hand in that? Yes. But, we feel like that's just scratching the surface. We feel like that's an opportunity for us moving forward to develop consistent programs, not just one-time things. And to kind of jump on the back of Rob a little bit here, is, sports has played an important role in all of our lives. I think anyone who's been a part of this committee, either an extracurricular activity or a sport or something, has played a major role in developing their character or them as a person. Now, I'm here to talk about athletics, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the extracurricular. But, the classroom teaches kids skills. Athletics helps those kids apply those skills. Competition, time management, solve problem solving, teamwork, communication. All these things are not necessarily things they can learn in the classroom. Some they can, but this gives, athletics, we feel, gives them an environment to create a whole person. It's not just about education. It's not just about sports. It's about the whole person, creating the best individual that leaves this school and serves them for the rest of their life. So, that's all I would like about that.
As amazing as it may seem, I'm the point guard on our Gus McCall team.
I'm the center.
So, we know we're in trouble. I'm also the grand old man of our subcommittee. As such, I've been around quite a long time. I've been involved in boards, commissions, associations, my entire adult career. And throughout that, I've served on a lot of boards, a lot of committees, and I've served on some good committees and boards, and I've served on some bad ones. This is a good board. This is a good committee. If you want this group to keep trying to help achieve some of the goals that were established in the strategic plan, this is a group that can do it. And so, that's what we want to talk a little bit about tonight. One of the other things I've been involved in on so many occasions is these strategic planning sessions, city, county, organization, board, school board. They tackle a strategic planning process because they think they're here and they'd like to come here. We assume that's why this committee was formed in the first place, Dunlap Athletics. It's good. We want it to be great. And so, we went through the process, and frankly, we developed this, which is great. But, all of it is our words on a piece of paper. Like every strategic plan, this is the actual easy part. You can achieve this and then pat yourself on the back and thump your chest and say, "My, what a great job we've done." And you've done nothing. The hard part is implementing this. If something is here and you want to get to this vision of what it can and should be, why aren't you there? What's holding you back? What's preventing you from being that already? That's the hard part, and that's what this committee is starting to do. One of the things, as we came into the committee meetings and we discovered, is that, for example, there's this big disconnect between the middle schools and the high schools. There's no continuity. There's no consistency. Kids in middle school are doing something, and the high school wishes, they might be wishing they're doing something else, but they're not communicating. That's a fairly easy one to tackle. We came up with the head coach policy, and it's very straightforward. The head coach is responsible for establishing protocols at each level, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, freshmen, sophomores, JV. Protocols that say, "We want our kids to have these fundamentals at each level. We want you to know how to do this when you go from sixth to seventh grade, from seventh to eighth, from eighth to high school." That saves time when they're in high school. You can expect these kids to know how to do these things, so you're not wasting time teaching them in high school, but that did not exist. And so, we established a head coaching policy. It's a good document too, but that's all it is. It's a document that says how to get from here to here, and the difficulty may be in trying to implement that. You'll probably, if you adopt this, which I take it now is coming up next month, if you adopt this, you will ask your athletic director to implement this, which means she will have to get with the head coaches, and we need your protocols. And then, she'll have to sit down with the assistant coaches at high schools and the middle school coaches and tell them, "We expect you to implement this." Now, what does that mean? It means change. It's not the way it's been done before. Change is always hard. But, if you want to get from here to here, this vision, and you believe in this, you adopted it, so we think you did, if you want to get here, it's going to involve change. It's going to involve breaking a few eggs, which is never an easy part. But, without that, we may as well just stay where we are. So, that's one example, that head coaching policy. We think it's a good one. During this process, yes, we've met 40 times from an hour to two hours apiece. We spent two hours one night with all of the coaches. It was extremely informative. And this is my file for the athletic leadership committee so far, just mine. If we continue going, it's going to grow a whole lot more. But, along that process, we, as Chad said, we've identified a number of what we call impediments. There are systems, there are processes, there are procedures, there are practices that we're doing now in Dunlap that don't encourage the development of this strategic plan. And so, as we've seen those, we've marked those down, and it's our goal to tackle those, to come back to you as a school board, to make suggestions and recommendations on how to get from here to here, on how to make changes in those policies and practices, to overcome those, to achieve what we think Dunlap Athletics could and can and should be, and what you all would like for it to be, hopefully. So, that's what we would propose to continue doing. But, the question and the main reason that we wanted to sit down with you tonight is to ask this basic question. Do you really want us to continue? We will commit the time. It's a very good committee, I can assure you of that, and it cuts across a broad swath of people who really can make a difference. Do you want us to continue? And if you do, let us know. If you're satisfied with the way things are, thank us for our time and send us on our way. And if you're not, then we want to work with you. You're the school board, and we'll come back with recommendations. It'll be up to you as to whether you adopt those or not. And if you don't, that's your decision. But, we'd like for you to work with us and us to work with you, to try to tackle these impediments, to come back with Karen, and come back with recommendations for tackling these, that will make these processes and policies and procedures better. And in the end result, we actually get to the vision that's in this strategic plan. So, that's the first question for tonight. Do you really want us to continue? We'll do it, but only if you want to, want us to, and if you want to work with us to try to get to this. And the second, we'd like to ask you, what impediments do you all see? We met with the coaches, and we learned a lot from them. As Chad said, we need to hear from you as well. Some may feel a little uncomfortable, and time constraints don't allow you, so if you prefer more quietly to contact one of us, and this is probably an issue you guys should look at, and this is an issue you should look at, please feel free to do that too. So, basically, it probably comes down to one question, is, do you really want us to continue with this work? Because we can, we will do it, and we think we can make a difference. We can help make a difference, but only if you really want us to. Questions?
Anybody have any questions for them? I have no questions, other than I just thank you for your time. It's a lot of time. And I guess, if there aren't, did you have a question?
As far as the impediments, I'm just curious, not necessarily specifically what they are as an issue, but what kind of timeframe do you see? Like, how many impediments to systems or programs, maybe down to like maybe five or 10? And do you see them tackling them multiple at a time, or try to do one at a time?
I think to a certain degree, it will be dependent upon the impediment. Some are long-term, some are short-term. How many? I'm going to let Mike take that, because he's been our, as you can see, he's our record keeper. But, really, it depends. There is no timetable, because each impediment is a little bit different. Some are things we can tackle pretty much immediately. Some are ones depending on, you know, different things and timing of when you address issues that we bring up at a different time, so.
We've identified so far about, I don't remember exactly, 10 or 12. But, the question is, how would you like for us to proceed? Would you prefer for us to tackle all of those and then come back with a full report? Would you rather us come back as we find potential solutions piecemeal and present those? That's up to the school board.
I would just say, try to prioritize them, maybe, you know, which is your top. You think that, you know, you just kind of go on that one, one to 10 or whatever, one to 12, this is our, and rank them, and just start knocking them off that way. That's what I would suggest. What do you see as the glaring impediment that you've uncovered that you think is number one? Is there one?
I don't know that the committee has sat down and created their priority list, but I definitely...
But, you're saying, pick the biggest one and start with that, or the easiest?
The one that had the most impact right away, that you'd say, okay, you know, picks the little one through, right? Boom, get that one knocked up, because it will have the greatest impact, we think, based upon your analysis.
We've already done...
It's kind of like a survey of customers, right? You have those things, and you see which one you can improve.
That's that head coach.
The head coaching is the first one. There was a definite consensus that administration wanted to be principal school or whatever, that what we were hearing was that disconnected middle school, high school, that consistency. So, that was one of the things that was addressed very quickly, to obviously try to resolve that.
I can tell you right now that I think there's at least one sport that that's already taking effect, because I know that the head basketball coach, Tony Thompson, he's had the middle school camp last week, and the middle school coaches are already starting to teach Tony's offensive scheme at that level. So, they're learning it at that level, which to my knowledge, has never been done before. So, I think that policy's already being implemented at one level.
Well, and in some sports, it already, I mean, let's talk Chris Freeman for a minute. It had already been implemented, you know, from middle school to high school. So, some, when we talk about breaking age, we're not talking about making, you know, there will be some that will appreciate it, some that won't, on certain topics. That's just the nature of, and you deal with this every month, I'm sure. People that are happy, people are unhappy. So, it's basically gauging the cost and the cause reward. And unfortunately, there's going to be some that will not be, that will not change easily. And we understand that. But, as a school district, we, again, we have no agenda personally. When you join a group like this, and when you start to get to know these guys, and as many times as we've met, you learn to put your own personal, you know, my kid does this or whatever. You put that aside, and you understand it's bigger than you. And we truly believe as a group, Dunlap Athletics is good, but we can make it great. And not just great once in a while, but consistently good and with opportunities. But, and winning is huge. I mean, we are all very competitive guys, but doing it in the right way, and so that we're creating a whole person. You know, giving coaches the tools to be able to do that, giving the administrators the procedures and the processes to help them, making sure people are filling the right roles. And there's, there's a lot of different ways, some it's on the court, some it's off the court, that we can help with that, help you with that.
And they told me I couldn't talk again, but I'm going to say something. You know, it's just, it's about enabling the people that we put in charge of the different sports to compete at the highest level. So, we wouldn't, we absolutely would not cut corners when it comes to academics. So, let's enable and empower our athletics in the same fashion. Give them the ability to go out and compete every day. And there's, that's a mouthful, but, you know, I think we'll probably have more conversation available to drill it down a little bit closer for you guys.
We can't, we can't express enough that, in our minds, we don't see there's athletics and academics. Frankly, we see athletics as a part of academics. We're here at Dunlap to develop very productive, capable, adult citizens, starting right here. We just think that athletics helps create some of that leadership, teamwork, working together for a common goal. And it's a lot harder to teach in the classroom, but we don't see it as distinct from academics. We just see it as part of the overall developmental process for middle school and high school.
Yeah. I was just going to say, thank you for your work. Me and Brian sat on the initial committee when it got going, and I think it's worked very well. I mean, the product that you've brought forward, I think in that committee, at least from my vantage point, the biggest impediment was the fact that the middle school and the high school weren't working together on so many levels in certain sports. And the fact that you've kind of put something together to kind of start working on that, I think will solve a lot of the other issues that were coming along, and will lead to, I think, more successful teams, because the kids are coming up in that direction. So, they're not starting in high school and then changing directions on what they were learning from sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So, thank you for your time with that. I don't know, you know, other board members can speak, but I personally would like you to continue, just because when there is an issue, you know, there is a committee that's already established, that's kind of already knows the, you know, the groundwork. And you can take some of that information and look at it from an unbiased view. And as opposed to having, you know, the board have to take that brand new and make decisions on some things that, you know, that may affect a big group of people. I think it's always nice when we have a bigger committee who can look at things and, you know, kind of give their ideas and ask different questions to make sure, because a lot of times, I mean, we've got a lot of things we have to make decisions for. So, it's nice that there's subcommittees that can take a look at some of those things and bring back information, the same thing that you're doing here. And I personally like to see it at least a couple of times a year, that you're bringing back information and kind of just an update on where you are and how things are going. And I think one of the biggest issues too is communication, and the fact that you're meeting with coaches and you're meeting with administrators. You're kind of like the bridge between us and the athletics department, you know, because we can't be doing all those things, you know, nor should we a lot of times. But, to know that there's a committee that's sitting down with coaches and finding out, and they may be... and they may be much more open with you to find out what the issues are and find out what support they need from us to be successful. So thank you.
Yeah, and I echo that with the disparity, the disconnection between the middle and the high school. But I also think the bigger picture that your expertise and your model that you create to work together is raising the district overall, you know? Having a mission and a vision at the athletic level just goes hand in hand with the district mission. And I just think that just takes us all to a higher level because you guys have identified what the mission is. It's not this coach thinks it's this and this coach thinks it's that and the athletic director has her own idea and it's not coming together. You guys have laid that groundwork and I just think it's taken a social level. Very impressive.
And I would give you another idea to maybe work on. I've mentioned this to Karen, but I think summer programs and summer camps are a huge area to focus on because it's community-driven and it kind of feeds the system and helps our kids. And so, you know, I just kind of mentioned to her of looking at how do we enhance those programs if they're, you know, ran by the head coaches compensation-wise? How would we make it worth their while financially to make sure we have these? And I think we should, be something that we should look at to make it more lucrative for those coaches that are doing it and get more kids involved in it for this community because I think there's opportunity there. Karen, I.
Abby, what are your, Abby and Teresa, you have any?
I'd like to see them continue to do their work. I think anytime, whether it's education, curriculum, athletics, I mean, there's always territory involved, but articulation is always a good thing to be able to go from the primary school, middle school to high school. So I appreciate what you're doing. I'd like to see you continue. Thank you.
And I echo all those comments too. Excellently done. I would recommend continuing as well. We've come from where we were to this. I think we've made great strides just with your team, so great job.
And I agree with everything they said. One of the things, I just have a question maybe for the group to look at is, and I know it's a little bit controversial, the schedule. You know, our kids starting later in the day than other schools. And I don't know if that's one of your impediments that you have listed or not.
It has been brought up, yes.
Yeah, we just, we can vote on that tonight. Let's just.
And I know there's a lot to it, so I just, I know there's a lot involved more than So there's a lot to look at, but it might be neat to get your perspective on that as well. So I think we all agree that we definitely want you to continue. And I guess the next thing to talk about is sort of the process. Do you view the best way to do this as you getting ideas to Katie and having her present to the board as you have them?
That's, I think that's the way we envision it.
Yes.
That's our leadership.
Okay. And Katie, is that what you?
I'm new, so I didn't know I was supposed to come up here to talk.
Oh, okay.
Join up here.
Is that the process that you're envisioning as well?
Yeah, so that's kind of what we talked about. And I'll give this, the lacrosse information is kind of an example because those are really the meetings that I've been involved in up to this point. And that's just kind of what we've done. We've had discussions, we've pulled information from different places and then, you know, together, we've kind of put our information into one, you know, to be presented. And I know some other things have been brought up just since I've started and people have said, well, maybe that's something for the athletic leadership team to kind of tackle and look into. So that's kind of the way that I see it as well.
Okay. Any other impediments anybody else wanted to bring up? Or everybody can talk individually. Do you have any other questions from the board or?
Not really questions again, it just kind of goes back to the statement of engage us. If you have something, we're available. I mean, we'll make ourselves available because again, there's all different. We talked about the different stakeholders, parents, administrators. We all have different perspectives. We all have different challenges. And so, and they may come up at different times. So I would say for me, which we will continue to engage administrators and we'll have more coaches meetings and as things come up, engage us. When things come up, let us know. We want to help, that's why we're here.
And we really, really appreciate all the time. I mean, it's unprecedented, I think, for this many hours of work at this stage in the game. So thank you so much for your time. And I know we all will, and we'll communicate with you and engage your help when and if we need it, I'm sure we will. So anything else? Any other questions or comments? Thank you again. Thank you, Ann, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
No, you want to talk about lacrosse.
Oh, lacrosse, I'm sorry.
Good luck discussing.
Okay.
Karen and Scott. Love to, I'll leave the discussion on lacrosse.
Ann, do you want them to talk about their recommendation on lacrosse? Could we launch on it?
Okay. And if somebody from the leadership team wants to come up and talk about your recommendation on lacrosse, you're welcome as well. So the administration will now provide to the board their recommendation on whether or not lacrosse should be an IHSA sport.
So basically, what we've done up to this point, where we've gotten this information from is by contacting a lot of other schools that are kind of like us, that are in the same boat and thinking about adding lacrosse as an IHSA sport. So some of this information comes from other schools, some of it comes from the IHSA. We've met, as Tom said earlier, with him a few times. So that's where we've, where we've gotten all this information from that's in the packet. So if anybody has any questions, I, we go through it.
Okay. Is there any update on how many teams are already accepted as lacrosse IHSA?
The data you got is not as late breaking as we can get. It continues to be revised and updated, but that's what we know right now.
Okay. And are there any predictions from IHSA? Do they have any idea?
When I talked to Matt Trelawney, who was the associate director in charge, he told me that they were hoping about 80.
80?
Yes.
Okay. And so at this point, there are only one, six, right?
So, well, the ones that are in this packet are the ones that I contacted. I got these schools, the names of these schools from the Dunlap lacrosse representative, some of them, some of them I went on my own or got recommendations from other athletic directors. Because a lot of these, I think, were in the particular conference that we have played with. So that's where I started as far as.
So how many do they have so far?
Can I just say? The, when you, when you're an IHSA sport, you go online the fall and you kind of designate what sport your school's going to be involved in. So there's really no advantage to declaring for those other schools to declare now. They will do that for the fall though. So they don't have any numbers for it. Say, hey, there's already 25 committed.
I thought initially you mentioned that we didn't have to declare until February. That's not true.
We don't have to declare until February, correct.
But people are doing it in August.
They do it in August, yeah. They'll start to do the.
If the board has already approved it.
I'm sorry.
If the board has already approved it, they would go in the.
In August, correct.
Or you can do it.
But they don't have to until February. Right. But they didn't give us that in this disroom as far as, hey, 25 are committed already.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions?
Yeah, how many students do we have that we think that would be affected by IHSA if it were to go, you know, live, 27?
The same number as we have in the club, I assume 25 to 30.
Okay, so those are all the same students that would still be here and none are graduating out?
Correct.
About the same, 25 to 30 students total.
Does that include though, aren't we doing a co-op? Besides, there's something like 19 or 20?
Two from Richwoods?
Well, when you go to the IHSA level, you're gonna have to decide as a board who we want to co-op with. And that would be something the athletic leadership team would, to be involved in. Now, the interesting thing about a co-op in lacrosse is typically schools are reluctant to join a lot of co-ops because it bumps their enrollment up to a different class level. Okay? So like, let's take a school like Brentfield, they would be very hesitant to co-op in softball with, I don't know, Princeville, because their enrollment now would go to the next level of classification and they have to compete against bigger schools.
You have to add those two schools.
You have to add those enrollments together. So with lacrosse being one class, it's as big, it's from anywhere from 200 school enrollment to 4,000 enrollment. So you could judiciously decide, hey, we want to accept this school, we don't want to accept this school, and you can make your own co-op that way. When that happens though, you have to have board approval from each board involved, each school board involved. You have to have your conference approval, even though it's not a conference sport, the middle line, I would have to sign off on that. And then it goes to the IHSA.
Aren't the co-ops a two-year agreement?
Yep. And then two years, correct.
So if we had the kids from Richwoods, we would add the enrollment at Richwoods?
Correct. But it wouldn't matter in lacrosse because we can be as big as we want.
Yeah, it doesn't.
Oh, it's only one class.
Right. Now, yeah, if you did that in tennis, obviously, you're gonna be bumped up to two A tennis. So you gotta kind of weigh how many kids you.
Right, I see. Okay. What other questions?
So just a housekeeping question. The other document, are we gonna go through what the athletic leadership team put through those ball points or no? That's in this document? Or you just want me?
Did anybody from athletic leadership team want to, do you have questions for them?
I do have questions on that document.
Okay, is it okay?
Sure, absolutely.
Could somebody come forward?
No, that's fine because you guys probably went through it. So my question, if we do a co-op, wouldn't it be, what's your thoughts on, you know, I think it'd probably be reasonable to say if you're from Richwoods that you're paying more of a fee than the 350. So have you thought any about what that fee would be if you're outside the district?
That's very common for if a school two co-op, the host school, those students would just pay their activity fee like everybody else. But the opposing school or the schools that we're getting kids from for the co-op, they would have a price that would, or a cost to them that would have the total cost of program broken down by students. So let's say there's, let's just say for round figures, the total program would cost you $30,000 and there's 30 students involved, so the average cost is $1,000 per student. So if it's a $100 activity fee and you're from Richwoods, Karen, you want to play, you owe it $1,000. So the $100 activity fee, you know, 1,100.
Exactly proportional to the cost.
Right, right. So they're paying a little bit more, they're paying considerably more.
And we don't do that today as a club, right, Tom? So it's the same fee?
No. Richwoods kids pay the $100 activity fee.
But it's the same fee, the dollar.
Same, yeah.
And typically, when you enter a co-op agreement, that school who's sending their kids to you pays that difference. They would get an invoice to that school for that money and that school would pay it. Because let's be honest, it's cheaper for them to send them off to our school to give those kids that opportunity. So that would be a local school board decision whether or not they wanted to fund that opportunity.
So you haven't really looked at the math, what that potentially would be for this program?
Have we looked at, I know there's been some discussion, at least amongst the board too, about girls lacrosse? Do we know any idea of the number of girls that may be interested in lacrosse?
Not, we don't have any data with that at the high school level. I do know that when I got the numbers from the gentleman who's in charge of Dunlap Rec, that they are currently trying to set up some clinics for girls at the younger levels. But as far as the high school, we don't have those numbers.
You know the interest though, based on the. The surveys. But you don't have, you haven't sat down with kids and said, would you be interested?
Right, correct.
You don't know the specific people. And we don't know the numbers from the survey of how many said they'd be interested?
Yeah, we have that.
Okay.
That I emailed you, it's not in the package.
I don't remember, were there numbers on it? I thought it was just.
No, you missed the selection.
I think it was just the numbers.
Yeah, the numbers.
Yeah, okay. You would do that, okay.
I think another thing I wanted to add, sort of was cognizant of the fact that Dunlap has had a club program for six years. So from a sustainability side, we've been, the high school's been running a program for six years at the club level.
And how many, has that grown over the six years or has it been a pretty steady number at the club level? Do you know?
I believe that was in the prior information we provided, and it's been pretty consistent growth. I mean, pretty consistent numbers, not a lot of growth. So it's probably been pretty strong.
Not to feel too tense.
Right, right. A JV university.
And the proposal is for a JV university?
That's right. Correct.
Any other questions?
I guess, Mike, just from looking at the emails and trying to catch up with what I know of the situation, when, in the information section, you say, if the board chooses to adopt lacrosse as a high school sport, the administrative recommendation would be to field both a boys and girls team. I mean, is that financially possible at this point? Karen, I'm looking.
As far as how to pay for the girls team, it would have to come out of money that is still remaining in the teneted seats in the end line. It is not, the boys is in the tenet, the boys program is in the teneted budget, the girls program is not in the teneted budget. So it would be another expense that it would come out of.
The 29,000?
Out of the 29,000 that's there once the OSF assumption is accounted for.
So about 15,000 out of the 29 to fill the girls team. We don't know, we can't field one, but we need to offer it for Title IX.
No, that's not correct. That's, you would have, if there's interest to do a team, that wouldn't just satisfy Title IX to say, oh, we're gonna offer lacrosse and nobody's here on a Title IX perspective. So if there's enough girls that want it and did the surveys and said, yeah, we need it and we look at it and can support a program, then you'd have to add it. But you would just add it to add it. So if Title IX is a concern, I think what you would do is take cheer, which is not competitive today, which you already have a program. And then that would be, if you make that competitive, then that qualifies as Title IX.
But they're gonna need the time to gauge the interest of the parents and the students whether they want to go competitive, right?
That would be a paradigm shift for our current treaty.
I mean, you'd lose part of your team probably, right? Because some of them wouldn't qualify for competitive cheer and they may not want to do it at that level. I mean, I guess.
No, again, that's where the surveys come in. That's where the surveys are because as a board, if the girls want to go to competitive cheer and it's not, like Scott, you've been on the IHSA Title IX, you can't say, well, we don't want to do it and it's problems for us. It would have to be a survey that we.
Right. I just see it as a completely separate issue. I mean, I think if that's something that the girls want to do, and we certainly should look at it, and if they want to go competitive, but I think that's a completely separate issue than having a girls lacrosse team if you're gonna bring boys into lacrosse. Look, I've got, after reading all of this, and I think sports are excellent, all my kids have played sports, I have four kids in college right now, which, okay, that's a whole nother subject. But I just think that, you know, if we're gonna offer it for boys, we should probably try to pair that and offer it for girls too. You know, and one option that I don't see on here would be to, and I know you guys are saying opposing to hold off to fall, kind of see where things are, see what the interest is in the other area, schools, and kind of make a decision a little bit later in fall. Could we not take a look at maybe offering the girls program and keep them both, at least offering to girls what we've had currently for boys? Which is at least start up a club and kind of see where the interest is before we go live and take the boys one more step to kind of pull the girls up where the boys are right now and kind of start a club just to kind of see what the interest is. And then potentially within a year, take both teams to IHSA once you kind of see where you are? I mean, is that, could that be an option?
Well, I think the question is, and from reading all the Title IX stuff, I found it very confusing because there's a lot of different information out there. But Karen, are you our Title IX person?
Well, I'm talking to Jamie and Lisa.
Okay.
Well, I'm talking to Jamie and Lisa, they figure out Title IX.
So my understanding is, one thing, place I, I thought I read where you're supposed to do the survey, maybe it's from J's, to find out which sports the girls would want to add, as opposed to just saying we're going to add lacrosse if that's not their first choice. How specific is that? I mean, do you have to go with what the girls say is their first choice numerically from that survey or?
Well, I don't know why you wouldn't.
Right.
You know, I mean, I think, I think what I'm hearing you say, trying to clarify this, is we need accurate information. And whether it be a survey of the cheer, one is a survey of the current cheer team to see if they would be interested in going competitive, to explore that possibility. And other is to survey the student body, particularly the girls, to see what sports would be potentially offered and be sustainable. But that's a great point that Mrs. Bowles has made about if it is a sport that we decide, whatever it is, if this shows the interest is there, maybe it starts as a club and if it's sustainable like lacrosse has been, then you move that to the competitive level. That sounds like the logical approach.
Can you do that and still not have the Title IX risk?
I would recommend that, because I think some of these issues were addressed in the email from our attorney on June 13th. I think I would recommend that maybe if you've got some questions on Title IX, maybe you should do a call with the attorney before we go down the road of a survey and I just, I want to make sure that we're following the advice of legal counsel.
And he did address that, about the survey. There's risks to engaging the survey because then you kind of opened up a can of worms and then you've got to haul through. Because then people are very, you know, wondering then why you aren't offering that if you asked our attorney. So I think that's the, he had an email or he gave a letter of advice on that. And I agree that the easiest thing, like Brian said, is if the cheer team wanted to go competitive, then you might get your numbers. Because it's not about the number of sports with Title IX, it's the number of participants. So, you know, and that's why Jay Greening, our attorney, was saying, every school runs into trouble when you have the football program because the numbers right there are so huge for boys versus girls. You know, luckily we have a real strong cross country program at the track, you know, we have good numbers, but to balance it out, it's a numbers game, not a sports game. So, you know, I mean, measurement.
Great. On one of the surveys, was it competitive cheer pretty high?
I don't.
I was thinking.
I thought it showed up quite a bit.
But I mean, even then, what do you add, 15 or 20 is what you add for competitive?
It's about 29.
Yeah, well, I mean, all the girls currently would want to do it, which is, would be unique, but it could be possible.
The numbers would drop if it goes competitive because there's cuts.
Yeah, it definitely does. Because it's definitely a different.
Right, but I mean, if you have to take the survey results.
Yeah.
But I don't know how old that survey was, I can't really.
We can do, we can do surveys anytime you want.
When was the last time you did an athletic survey, to ask?
There was one last year and there was one two years ago.
It's every two years as you're required to do it. And so we aren't required to do another one?
When I talked to the regional office about it last week, they did not. I thought it was every other year, like you believe, and that was not there.
That's what we did.
They said that's what was always done.
They said every year?
No, they said absolutely not every year.
Oh, so we would be in total.
Oh, we're in total compliance, yeah.
Okay. So I guess what does the most, do you remember what the most recent survey says that the girls' first choice was?
We have that in.
Yeah. We have, we have the information. Yeah, I just can't remember which one was which.
With 500 pages, I can't see why you wouldn't.
It was an email.
And while they're looking to see what the survey was, the recommendation was at least to gather more information. I think the first time it came before the board on an agenda, I think it was April, so two months ago. And so you're in the process of gathering the information. It seems that you need to have the facts and data, not only to make the right decision financially, but also legally and the long-term interest of the parents. You know, if you haven't had a chance to talk to the parents about the additional costs. I mean, you had a litany of things that you still need to get under your option three. Making sure all students and parents participating will be willing to pay the increased price. Talk to parents who have expressed an interest in wrestling, which has been a long-term interest, and that's July 13th. Learn more about the program costs, interest of the students. Doesn't need to be made now, it's not even open for you to indicate that that's something that Dunlap's going to do. You can easily vote on it in the fall instead of the summer. Get more certain about the number of participants at Dunlap and then who would co-op with you and how would that work, is it feasible if it's going to work? And then you'd be able to solidify an activity fee based on nailing down the number of participants, right? So if you don't know that, we're still looking at a variable and then seeing if parents are interested in that escalating price based on interest. Also seeing how much money we will or will not receive from the state of Illinois, which would impact our budget decisions. So there's a lot of hard quantitative things that we just don't know and there's not a deadline looming. So other than, you have a question on how we process this, I think the big question tonight is the timing. You know, or if everyone wants to vote consensus, you know, absolutely no lacrosse, I don't think that's where we are.
I would vote, I would propose that we go with the recommendation from the district athletic leadership committee and we approve lacrosse next month and reinstate the athletic budgets to where they were cut a couple of years ago.
And would you be for the 350 or the, aren't there two options?
Yeah, the 350, the option two, so I would have the option two.
Karen, what impact would that have?
You would be going into deficit budget in order to do that, to add lacrosse?
What was the total amount of the funds for the sports that was cut?
The total amount of the funds for the sports was, it was around, I don't have an exact number, but it was right around 15,000, $16,000 for the sports. So that was cut, that would need to be put back.
And I guess my issue with that is since my tenure on the board, the reinstatement of those cuts that happened have never been brought to me as saying, hey, this wants to get up. I guess I was surprised a few months ago when Scott came up to me and said, well, the coaches were cut. It's never come to this board level, so I guess, let me finish. So I guess, so my question is, so where does that, if the coach has been wanting that money reinstated for years and we've had budgets where they had extra money, we've had upsides, why did that not get reinstated then? Because it's never gotten the money, I've never voted on it, I've never voted line item on that. So I guess, well, I'm saying we're holding lacrosse hostage because we're reinstating that when it could have been two years ago. So the monies went somewhere, but it didn't go to them?
Well, the money, it was cut because of the budget deficit.
Right.
And so that was a decision that was made by the board and that's why budgets across the district were cut. All supply budgets, classroom supplies, instructional supplies, textbooks, everything.
I get, but we've added a number of, like this upcoming budget this year, we're adding a million six of new programs. What I'm saying, that, no, it wasn't in that number, we don't line item and see that. So I don't go through and say, oh, athletic budget, that's presented by administration. I'm saying, why was that not presented to get their back, get their number?
It would be a matter of.
Do they, do they tell it to the A.D. and how's it get through?
The A.D. would have come through the A.D. or to.
And then did it ever get to you and so you said, no way, we're not increasing that or it just never happened? Nobody has ever asked for it in two years?
They have, I mean, I think everybody would like to have their money back from 14, 15